I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council charter. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united, without any difficulty, with liberty and justice
This past weekend, Grant County lost one of the great leaders of our time, Representative Murray Ryan. Would you please join us in a moment of silence for this great man? I know we all have many fond members of him. One of mine was when my son was doing his Eagle Scout project. Murray came over and he worked all day long, right along with the boys. That's the kind of community member he was. The first item on the agenda requiring action is actually public input. No one signed up, so we'll move on to item number five, council comments. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year to everybody. We would like to be back. It's about time, I think. Anyway, I have very short things to say. I know I mentioned on one of the town council meetings that I was against the taxes for schools. I had an in-depth conversation with the superintendent, Mr. Aldi Brown, and he explained to me why it was needed to be done, and it all made a lot of sense to me. And I do believe what he said was true. I also talked to the principal, Mr. Victor Machaca, and he explained to me why it needs to be done for the schools, and it is true. So with that, I changed my mind, and I will support it. I personally like to receive comments, and so all those people, and those people that write comments about our council meetings, I welcome them, and thank you. We're all trying to do a good job. It is not an easy thing to do, and hopefully that people can see where and why we do what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start by saying that our community development director has been gone through a number of processes to do public comment for the comprehensive plan, and she's not done yet. So there will be various other data collection processes going on regarding the comprehensive plan, and this is really important, and I really want to encourage you, there'll be a survey link and other opportunities for comment. When those come out, please get engaged. I also want to acknowledge the recent news article about, two news articles actually, one about the Boston Hill Trail work by citizens in town on a collaboration, and that was really encouraging. A number of people came up and told me they were really happy to read about work being done on Boston Hill, that they walk those trails regularly. And then one that just came out yesterday about internal promotions at our police department and the various professional certifications that those folks have received. I was really thrilled to read that, and I just want to thank the news outlets for publishing those and for providing more information to our community.
Thank you. Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate something that we probably talked about maybe four years ago. It's about peddler's licenses in the town of Silver City, because I've got word that at least part of District 1 is receiving an inundation of young individuals that are trying to sell various products, everything from home security systems to other things. And I just want to make sure folks know, once again, I want to reiterate, the peddler's license the town provides is for individuals to go to businesses that are open to the public. It is not a license for them to go door-to-door to residential areas. So when someone says, "But I have a license," that license, according to what we had researched, the town attorney and I had done a number of years ago, is it's only good for businesses that are open to the public and not to your doors. So don't feel bad when you turn someone away and say, "No, thank you." And if you have a problem, and if you think that there's something else going on, because some of these, sometimes, once in a while, there's cases where some of these groups that are coming in are not just selling items, and I know probably what you're going to say in a minute, Mr. Scavron, but let me just finish this. This, I'm talking about home security systems and things like that. It can also be used as a way for them to know what you have in your home. So I would just caution you to be careful. If you have any questions, you can contact the police department. I would just make sure that you understand that if children are selling subscriptions or selling candy, doing things like that for fundraising, that is something that there is no license for, and that is something we cannot stop. I don't know if Mr. Scavron would to add anything additional to that. Okay.
I do want to add one thing, is that the best thing to do, really, is to put up a sign that says "No Peddlers" at the access to your property. Once they cross that line, then they're trespassing. So if you want to do the, instead of having to answer the bell and have a dialogue with the person who's trying to sell you something, putting up a "No Peddler" sign on the entrance to your property, take a piece of paper, print it out, put it in something that'll keep it dry, and just put it on your property, and that will protect your property. And then if someone does violate that, call the police.
Yes, and especially if they say that, "No, I have a license," because that license doesn't really allow them to come on your private property, especially if you have it posted. Thank you, Mr. Scavron. So I just wanted to encourage folks, it's, you can tell me, but I can't, I don't, you know, and tell me that this is going on, but it's best if you have a concern about this, that you actually contact the non-emergency number of Central Dispatch and explain what the concern is, or, and to contact the police in that way, because then they can track it, track where folks are and things like that. So I just, I think it's really important to understand that I can't do much if I don't witness something, so we need you to call. So we need you to be the ones that are, that make sure that you express concern about this to the, to our police department through Central Dispatch, non-emergency. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Coman?
Thank you, Mayor. First, for anyone who noticed in the room, I am again not standing during the Pledge of Allegiance, and I want everyone to know that's not because I'm not patriotic, it is because my doctor says I must remain seated for the near future. Probably the next couple of years, I'll be in this wheelchair. So that's why I'm doing that, not because I have any sort of statement to make or anything like that. The legislative session will be starting next Tuesday, so I know a lot of us will be in and out of Silver City on our way to Santa Fe. If people have messages or things they'd like us to take to their representatives, please, or senators, please let us know before we leave, because then we'll be able to take those to them. Our council often talks about the concept of if you see something, say something, meaning that if you have a situation where you think law enforcement should be involved, that you should probably call them, and we encourage you to do that. I just wanted to share that in the past three weeks, I've had to call the police, the police department, three times for three different, rather intense situations. I'm going to go with that. And I would just like to thank the police officers that have responded for their professionalism in what they've been having to deal with, especially Officer Click, who was the respondent two out of the three times that I had to call. And what's been really nice is that I've found out what has happened since those situations have occurred, and I really appreciate that the police officers will continue to let you know what's happened after, you know, how the situation was dealt with, which is something I really appreciate. I too was happy to see all of the promotions in the police department, and I just wanted to congratulate each of these people by name and by new title. So Captain Freddie Fortio, Lieutenant James Cruzen, Sergeant Jason Woods, Sergeant Arthur Raspon, Corporal William Lada, Corporal Stephen Delgado, Corporal Joseph Aguirre, Detective Sergeant Ben Villegas, Detective Joy Bascom, and Detective Salvador Quintana. We're all very proud of you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? I would like to announce that February the 18th is Territorial Charter Day celebration. Territorial Charter Day is actually February the 15th, but by action of the council, we celebrate it on a Saturday closest to that, which is the 18th. There is a committee that's working now. The committee consists of a good spectrum of community members that are putting together programs and so on for that day, so hopefully we'll hear something from that committee soon. If anyone would like to get involved with Territorial Charter Days and have some thoughts as to some things that we might consider doing, then please contact Lucy Whitmore at the visitor center, and I'm sure she will welcome any help. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Councilor Madison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to remove under unfinished business number B, approval slash disapproval of a selection of a final design for the Welcome to Silver City signs.
Is there a favorable motion? Is there a second?
Mr. May, I ask that motion is stated.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, since I know this is a project due to your heart, could you please explain why we're removing it from the agenda tonight?
Sure.
Thank you.
I have a statement I want to read. One of my goals as mayor is to make visitors to Silver City feel welcome when they arrive. One way to do that is with Welcome to Silver City signs on the major roads into town. We currently have no such signs. When I first started this project several months ago, I discovered that there had been in the works for several years a series of wayfinding signs that had been designed by the New Mexico State Main Street by Mr. Charlie Deans of the Community by Design Department. Wanting to maintain a sense of continuity in our town signage, I asked him to create several designs that we could consider, and he did that, had no charge to the city. These two designs, along with the two other designs, were placed on the town website and have been the basis for our recent public input. The public input was very good. Approximately 650 people made comments. However, in addition to a public comment on the four designs, there have also been a lot of comments suggesting that we should tap into our local talent of artists and other community members for input into the design, a recommendation that I will follow. Therefore, based on public input and the fact, which I only recently discovered, that the town really has no official signage design, I am going to renew the selection process again. When we, although the details have not been worked out yet, we will soon be inviting community members to submit a design of their creation for consideration. A link on the town website will be created, where the various designs that are submitted will be on exhibit and also for public input. We don't have a finalized process yet, but the town will announce and publicize the details once we have the process in place and are ready to begin. This process and Welcome to Silver City signs will not happen overnight, because, as you know, the state of New Mexico's financial condition is experiencing major challenges right now, and those troubles will affect Silver City and every other town in the state. Obviously, our first priority will be to maintain basic services to our citizens and keep the town running, so the welcome signs will only happen when the town is able to afford them. That said, I would like to stress that Welcome to Silver City signs are much needed and will contribute to the overall impression people receive when arriving in our town. We have a chance to create something great, a positive and artistic image for Silver City that may spin off into other avenues of economic development, and we have the tremendous artistic talent in our town to create something special. Economic growth in Silver City will most likely not be the result of large corporations relocating here, but instead will come from the success stories of many varied smaller elements, our arts and cultural activities and heritage, our tourist and visitors industry, and small businesses choosing Silver City as a place where they know they can flourish. So as soon as we're able, we'll begin with welcome, the process of creating welcome signs that encourage that positive image and see where it leads. I am looking forward to working with you toward this goal. Thank you. We have a second. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the December 13th, 2016 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of December 13th, 2016.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion is stated.
They have a motion, any second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is reports. The first item, 8A, is the presentation on Community Youth Building Program, and that's going to be given by who, Mr. Staley?
Well, it's obvious that I'm not Bianca Pini, I think, but I will give that presentation. Thank you. Mr. Torres is going to help me, because all I can do with a computer is turn it on and off. My name is Gary Staley, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, members of the media, everybody else that's here. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come and make a presentation to you on our Community Youth Building Program. We've entitled this "Building Youth While Building Community." I could have turned it around. I could have said "Building Community While Building Youth." The important thing is which side of the scissors is the most important. I think both blades are equally important. So when we build community, we build youth, and when we build youth, we build community. We wanted to, this evening, give you a, since you had a couple of items dropped from the agenda, and I actually think we could have an hour and 20 minutes.
And thanks for time. I'm underserved.
So we will cover this in a timely manner. We have a wonderful partnership with the town of Silver City in our Community Youth Building Program. Mr. Brown has been incredible to work with, as well as many of your staff. We offer kudos to Jesus from Parks, just if I have a hard time saying his last name, and I apologize for that. Mr. Diaz from Maintenance. Chief Reynolds has been instrumental with his department recently, and I'll explain that in a new initiative that we have, that he's been very helpful with. I need to tell you that last calendar year, our youth performed 2,580 hours in this community. The adults who participated within, which includes supervisors such as Rob and myself, and a number of other community volunteers, including people like Kristen Lindgren, who is going to make a presentation right after us, many of these kind of people donated 1,258 hours for a total of 3,838 man-hours, most of which was done within the confines of the town of Silver City. You can sort of factor that out as to what that would mean in savings to the town and savings to other nonprofits within the community. A full-time position, I believe, is 2,080 hours a year, so that's nearly two full-time positions, for which you had to pay no money, and you had to pay no benefits. So we're going to show you some of the things that we've done. Rob is going to turn on a little PowerPoint. You can sort of, it will run through, and I'll make some comments as we go. We focused a lot on some of your existing parks. We adopted the maintenance of the Butterfly Garden at Penny Park. You may recall, some of you, that the 4-H Club actually installed all the plants in that park, but were unable to maintain them. What we have done is actually installed an automated irrigation system, so all those plants are automatically watered. One of our goals has been not to create more work for your people. When I first went to Jesus and to Mr. Pena, their comment was, "We love some of these projects, but they only often get halfway done and never maintained." And so we made a commitment to Alex, and we made a commitment to your people, that if we do a project, it will be a project that will maintain itself, basically, that will water itself, and we will then help clean, maintain it throughout the year. We were also able to refinish all of the woodwork at Penny Park during the year. This is another example of some things that we've done with the volunteer center, and I think Kristen can tell you some things, but we have helped them plant an orchard of fruit trees, of about 75 fruit trees. I don't know how many pounds of produce we grew last year, but the year before, we grew 2,200 pounds of produce that was then, went to the food bank. That's some examples of some of our kids finding bugs on cabbages and putting in a drip system, and we built some benches, and we can't even remember who those were for, but we built several benches, put them together down there. These are examples of youth who are learning skills. Okay, Rob? We have an ongoing partnership with the Bike Works, and that will continue even after they move to their new location. Just some various photos of kids in action. I put this in, Mr. Brown might not approve this, because he's got his hands in his pocket, and he's inspecting the project that we did there. We should have sent that to you for pre-approval, Mr. Brown, but this was an example of where we found a place that could use some attention when the governor came. And we quickly, like a Minuteman group, went in and cleaned that little parklet up and put some mulch on it. I texted Alex in his office, which was a half a block away, and I said, "Come down and see what we've done." I think I texted you, Mayor, and you came down to see also. The interesting thing with that also is that we found an existing irrigation system in that little parklet. So now we can go back and put something more permanent in and more colorful for the downtown. Keep going. This is an area along the Big Ditch that was just jungle-like, and you can see our youth getting down and dirty and helping to clean that up and making it more presentable. This was a project that's interesting, because we've also widened the net of the kind of organizations that we're inviting into the Community Youth Building Team. These were benches that were almost totally rotted out, broken, in the old Lions Park. So now we've become sort of the go-to program for Eagle Scout projects in the community, and the mayor's aware of that, I think. So we had an Eagle Scout project, the Eagle Scout person that wanted to do his project there, so he and his group redid all of the benches in that, I think there were seven of them. So it was quite a project, at zero cost to the town. All completely new wood. We cleaned that area up. It was literally like a jungle. I don't know if we have one of us having, setting fires in the Big Ditch, but maybe we've, but this gives an idea of how clean it can look before and after. Same photo. This is your new park behind the Office of Sustainability. We helped plant those fruit trees and the native plants that will do well in that setting. If you've been there, you know that those are curb cuts that have been turned into ponds, collecting ponds, and appropriate plantings there for those. So our youth are there cleaning that up, planting some more trees, and we will be installing an expanded drip irrigation system there this spring. We got a, I got a call one day from Lee Gruber from Park-
Arts and Cultural.
Arts and Cultural. I never can say that word. She said, "We need to move the press thing there."
That was moved.
So we took some youth down there and got that moved and secured, and then we cleaned, a lot of those plants were overgrown and protruding out into the walkway, and so we've down at the visitor center. Another interesting thing, we found at the visitor center that there were, some of the irrigation was watering basically nothing, and so since it already had irrigation, irrigation's such a premium in this community, we went down in the Big Ditch and harvested some vinca, which is a ground cover, and planted it where now it's getting regular water, and will cover an area around the visitor center. We took a high cup on Boston Hill with some of our youth as kind of a culminating thing for the summer activities, and they found it incredibly enjoyable, even when they had to almost pack me off the hill. The picture photo on the right is, we are continuing to build, and we'll have ready, hopefully, about 24 of the planter boxes. How many of you have seen the little box right there by City Hall? The little flower box. It's on the east side of the entrance. It's on the Bullard Street entrance. I think we put that in in October, and it's continuing to flourish throughout the winter. It's just still blooming. And that's a little box that we built out of recycled material, and the youth here are working on that, some of those boxes, and this happens to be at the volunteer center where we're doing that work. The pile of lumber on the left represents donations of material that contractors and other people have given us for some of the projects. An example of a couple more boxes that are well on the way to being completed. And our goal is to have 24 of those out by spring. There'll be some different sizes. This is a project at the Habitat Restore. They needed some help to build a shed, and our youth are there participating in learning and our youth are there participating, learning how to use hand tools. This is your museum where our youth helped decorate for Christmas. And just last Saturday, we had our youth take down every one of the Christmas garlands from your downtown Christmas area. So I think that's it. Now, that doesn't mean the presentation's over, but the-- Okay. So we hope that-- Mayor, you can tell me to sit down and shut up anytime you want to.
Let me give you a few more questions.
Okay. I just wanted to actually, hopefully, help you realize what the town's getting out of this, other than what we're doing here. We really think, our data shows, that juvenile delinquency crime is way down from what it was several years ago. I hope Chief Reynolds feels that there's much less encounters with juveniles now than there were five to 10 years ago. We realize that we will not be able to eliminate all crazy things that happen in a community, but we're trying at least to give you a reason not to become involved with the juvenile system. One of the things we didn't cover here is that we are, we work regularly down at the landfill and I know that that is a high priority for your town manager as he chairs that board. And we will continue to support all the efforts there, including pulling good material off to take to the Habitat Restore for their use. We continue to work on community health. One of our biggest issues, I will tell you upfront, that we have had very little impact on, on all the things that we've done. We still have a huge substance abuse problem in this community. And that includes our youth. Through this kind of a program, we're very hopeful that youth will now have a reason not to be on drugs. We thank you again for all the support that you've given us. I think I want to mention one more thing and that is, we've had a truancy prevention program in this county for about 19 years. But just this last year, we were able to help the schools get a grant that now includes dropout prevention. Chief Reynolds' group has been an integral part of that because there has to be law enforcement involvement when we get to filing on the parents. But that's what the law requires and I want to thank him publicly for that. We want to thank all of you publicly for your support of this and other programs. And anytime that you want to learn more about what we do, we'll be happy to educate you. Thank you. That's then for any questions or--
Any questions?
And normally you do your projects on Saturday, right?
We have projects almost every Saturday morning, starting at nine o'clock. This Saturday, we will be at the Bike Works.
Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it, Mr. Sebby.
Do you have a question, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Ray had a question.
Mr. Sebby, what do we get in contact with you?
I can give you my phone number, (538) 9080.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, 8B, is the annual High Desert Humane Society's report by Heidi Ogos.
It doesn't look like it's you.
Next item is a report on the Volunteer Center. Could you identify yourself, please?
My name is Kristen Longford. I'm the garden coordinator at the Volunteer Center and I thank you so much for having me here today. I've never given a talk at a podium in town council, so it's a very interesting new experience for me. I think it's really perfect that Gary presented about the youth program that they're working with right before me because my work has been so tied with working with those youth and I really feel like the Volunteer Center and the Commons, the space where we work, would not be what it is without their assistance. And so I really want to just acknowledge that after his really nice presentation. So I just have, I wrote something up, so I'm just going to go ahead and read that. Regardless of our politics, race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or any other factor, it's pretty likely that these are times of not knowing what is coming and acting in society. The Volunteer Center created the Common Center for Food Security and Sustainability as a space where people can come together around one thing that everyone can agree is essential to life: food. Our aim is to address the food needs of our community in three major ways. One is by addressing emergency food needs of community members. One in four children in Grant County is hungry. John Conway, our food distribution coordinator, organizes two monthly food pantries at the Commons, one monthly pantry in Baird, and provides assistance for food pantries in Hila and Hachita. He purchases the healthiest food available for the distributions and makes sure to always have both grains and beans available. We also provide emergency food boxes for those who are in urgent need of food. Our alimento program delivers backpacks with healthy snacks to 250 children every weekend. By distributing this quality food, we're fulfilling the very important task of keeping the bellies of Grant County folks. While the food pantry plays an essential role in our community, we also realize that the existence of hunger in our community is a deeper economic issue. Providing food helps in the moment, but without addressing the economic challenges in Grant County that keep people in poverty, our work perpetuates itself. The second component of our food work at the Commons comes with the Nuevos Comuneros Community Kitchen that opened in 2015 with the mission to build economic development by providing space and support for individuals to start small food businesses using our commercial kitchen. Rita Hokes, our kitchen manager, is currently working with several new food producers in town who are creating commercial products that are sold in our community. The kitchen can also be rented for specific food vendor needs, markets, and events. We are opening up to new ideas for the use of the kitchen that will encourage economic growth and give people more career-building skills. Rita also began the Mesquitos, a local group of native food enthusiasts who hope to create economy with native food plants like mesquite, acorns, pine mets, and more. The last way that we address food security and sustainability is with our hands in the dirt. I'm the garden coordinator at the Volunteer Center and so that kind of comes to my task, which is, I'm focused on what I'm mostly going to talk about today. So our current food system really relies on excessive fossil fuels to transport food across the country and even across borders. Knowing that peak oil has already occurred, we must think of how to produce food locally and sustainably so that there is a secure network of growers in Grant County. We believe in the transformational power of growing food locally and these are a number of ways that we do that in the community. So the Commons Garden, in the last two years, has produced 3,700 pounds of food for food pantry recipients. One of the challenges of food pantries is frequently that the food is pretty processed and there's not a whole lot of fiber. And so we really thought that it was essential to try to give fresh produce for those who are, and they need food. But that's just one thing that we do in the garden. We also really want to focus on educating the community about how to garden and grow themselves. One way we've done that is, as Gary mentioned, having our JPO youth come pretty regularly and working in the garden. They've planted seeds, they've prepared soil, they've harvested, they've cleaned, they've worked the food pantry distribution. They know, they know the ins and outs of growing food and even if they're not doing it right now, they can do it in the future. We also distribute plant starts for the folks who are receiving food from the food pantry so that they can have their own gardens at home. And thousands of seeds, so we probably distributed about 200 to 300 plant starts last year and thousands of seeds and had a lot of folks come back and really thank us for giving those things and tell us that their gardens were growing beautifully. And that's just such an amazing way to help with the food insecurity, having a garden at home that doesn't take a whole lot of time. We also host regular school and youth groups and workdays. So Aldo Leopold comes pretty regularly. We also have had the Kiwanis kids come and other groups that I can't think of off the top of my head. But we try to incorporate science education about the water cycle and biology and botany and decomposition. So kids are working with their hands and by working with their hands, they're learning about the way that the world works. Last year, we started a youth internship called Rooted and we had five teen interns that were paid stipends for working in the garden. So we worked three days a week in the morning and they learned about the food system through growing food and cooking food and doing lessons about where the food comes from. And one of those interns, we had students from different schools, but one of those interns actually came from the JPO program. So I think that that was a pretty huge success that somebody found so much interest in it that they wanted to keep going with it. We also have 75 plus fruit trees and shrubs for perennial food crops. We have onsite composting and have been receiving leaves from city members all over this year and last year and the year before. If you go to the Commons right now, it's quite a beautiful site because we just laid out all kinds of leaves and it's like this really diverse ecology that's just like, each bed has different leaves and it's like representative of everyone's yards who donated to our beautiful space and it's a really beautiful thing. One of our newest programs is called Common Wednesdays and that's something that we're really excited about. So every Wednesday from 4 to 6, there will be something offered to the community at the Commons. The first Wednesday of the month is a film screening. The second Wednesday of the month is an open garden time and workshop. The third Wednesday of the month is a family cookout. And the last Wednesday of the month, the fourth Wednesday of the month is the food pantry distribution. If there are five, if there are five Wednesdays of the month, there will be a guest speaker facilitator for the fifth Wednesday. And really, we just want to draw families in and have people around. So each month, there's a theme. This month's theme is seeds. Last week, we shared a film about the importance of diversity of seeds. And tomorrow, I'll be working in the garden, planting some starts and also teaching about how to start sprouts for winter gardening. So if you want to have fresh winter greens, having sprouts in your home. And also just learning about how to read seed packages because I feel like that's something that a lot of folks don't really have knowledge of. We also helped to start the local seed library, which has now moved to the public library and is really a successful program. And you can always check out seeds from the seed library. And the idea there is to try to continue to have seeds that are acclimated to our climate here. We also host a food corps service member who takes care of and teaches about gardening, takes care of our school gardens at 63 Elementary School at Jose Barrios and teaches over those schools, teaches classes to the teachers' classes who are interested in having that be taught. So we've been working with 63 Elementary School for three years and we've been working with Jose Barrios, this is the second year. And it's been a really successful thing. You can talk to all of the kids and they're really excited to eat radishes, which I don't think a lot of kids really are. But if a kid grows it, they'll try to eat it. And so I think there's a really big benefit to having kids in the garden, understanding where their food comes from and really getting connected to that part of our beings. So we also have received funds to put a lot of new infrastructure into school gardens this year. So we're going to be putting up a shed at Jose Barrios. We're going to be putting benches and podiums in three school gardens, including one at Harrison Schmidt, which we didn't even start. Two parents have started the garden at Harrison Schmidt and they're getting that really rolling, which is pretty great. So those are the things for the school gardens. And then we just, we have lots of ideas for the future, including, we'd love to have a team of youth who helps install gardens in people's backyards and then potentially is able to make profit from harvesting part of the produce that is in those backyard gardens and then the families get the opportunity to have the rest of the produce that's from those gardens. We also would love to work with JPO probably to do tubs, like a garden tub that we can deliver to people's homes that has soil and then give them seeds to black and belt. And we also, we have so many resources at the Volunteer Center and we really want to be able to help the community have access to gardening and to make it available. And so we have lots of tools and so I'm thinking about trying to do a garden tool library where you can come and check out garden tools. And we want to incorporate everyone's ideas. So if you have ideas about how to help us help the community garden, come talk to me. And the phone number at the Volunteer Center, if you want to, is (575) 388-2988. And that's it?
Thank you. Councilor Ray?
(575) 2988.
Councilor Ms. President?
I just want to acknowledge the Volunteer Center, which I've visited and worked with in a number of ways, as being a real representative of the best work, which is the sharing economy. So the seed library is really a sharing economy. The kind of work that comes there, the food that comes out of there, people put into it from the community, people take out from the community. That is really what the sharing economy is about and I really want to acknowledge the work that goes on there. It is a remarkable organization and I really am looking forward to being able to be part of some of those Wednesday programs. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Ray?
Thank you. It was very, very welcome.
Thank you for inviting me. (388) 2988. Gary thinks I didn't give the right phone number. Is it wrong?
Thank you very much.
I think it was right.
For that report.
It was wrong, it's probably the phone book.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item is staff reports. All right, I think Ann had something, right? Ann?
Yes, I wanted to announce that today was candidate filing day for our elected offices that are up for reelection. That's counselor in District 1 and counselor in District 3. So today, we had two people come and file. They were Cynthia Ann Medicine. She filed for counselor District 1. And then Jose A. Ray Jr. filed for counselor District 3. So at this point, they are uncontested. Our election's March 7th and the absentee voting at City Hall will begin on January 31st.
Okay, thank you. Next item is unfinished business.
Mayor, I have--
Okay, Mr. Brown, sorry about that. Go ahead.
We had some questions about employees taking vehicles home. I wanted to make it clear, the only time an employee takes a vehicle home is if they are on call. So they take it if they're gonna, there's a possibility of them coming into work, having to come into work. And that includes a few of the department heads that take their vehicles home because, for instance, Peter and Robert are always on call. So that, I wanted to make that clear publicly because it was a concern brought to Councilor Ray's attention that I want to make very clear.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Brown?
That's it.
First item under unfinished business. 10A is the approval slash disapproval of ordinance number 1254, an ordinance authorized in the donation of the tract of town-owned land known as the Old Hillcrest Hospital Site for an affordable housing project. Mr. Brown, who will be presenting this?
Before we begin, may I say something?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say that before we proceed with discussing this ordinance, proposed ordinance, I wish to disclose a potential conflict of interest and secure and the council's guidance on my inclusion in the discussion and decision on NORI 1254. I support the principle that the public has a right to know, that public officials make decisions based on an open and transparent process and those decisions have at heart a focus on the greater public good. I want to disclose publicly that I currently own a condominium at the Gardens Association Condominiums, which is a senior housing community in Silver City. I am also a member of the Board of Directors of the Gardens. Now, that is a community of resident-owned units, but there are always some that are leased. So therefore, building a new large complex specifically for affordable senior housing could be viewed as a threat to the future of viable sales or rentals in that condominium complex. I want to say that in this circumstance of my involvement as an owner and on the board of an established senior housing condominium complex, I'm personally not concerned that having more affordable housing in our town will affect the future sale or rental of units of the garden. that in doing so, I have any primary purpose of my own financial gain. I am therefore not recusing myself, but I'm seeking advice from the council and mayor as to whether in their judgment, I should continue to be part of the discussion.
Thank you. I'll just poll the council and see if they have any concerns. Counselor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no concerns.
Counselor Ray?
No, sir, none whatsoever.
Counselor Kano?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll proceed. Mr. Brown, who will be presenting this?
Uh, Joseph Madison, she's the sponsor.
Okay, Counselor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is, we passed the NOI in December, and we're now at the stage to determine whether or not the ordinance goes forward. And I am sponsoring this because the town fundamentally has a critical need for affordable housing, especially for seniors. And I think that this is a good use of the property that the Old Hillcrest Hospital Site. I think it provides for the company that's going to be working on this Bethel Development, and I'd like them to speak to this as well, is that it's, it really will sort of complete their package, because they are going through a process, and we're just providing the opportunity for them to begin a process by doing this. So I think at this point, before we go any further on it, I would like for either you, Mr. Brown, or for the gentleman from Bethel to talk a little bit more about the affordable housing.
I think the company would have a lot more information than I could, if I--
Well, and also our community development department director, because we do have a report from Stan.
Go ahead and give it over to him, then we can-- Yeah. She'll start, and then you can explain to us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I can give you a brief overview of the project, and I also have the answers to the mayor's concerns about transportation that the company has provided. So they've provided us with a distance to shopping, fitness center, the hospital, the library, so I have that. I can email that to you, I received it on Friday. And there also was a question from the mayor about other pieces of property being suitable for this development. Because of the tax credit program that Bethel Development is applying for with MFA in the state, they get extra points because it was a brownfield. So this piece of property, because of its history and its situation, is the best piece of property for this project in the tax credits. I also spoke with the director of Cory Caminos. Transportation was a question that the mayor had. They have a stop at the corner of Eighteenth and Juniper currently, and the director said it would be no problem to establish a stop on the property. And she also said that the senior center coordinates rides for people that don't have a ride. And so I think that answered most of the mayor's questions, except for the timeframe. MFA, like other state programs, has changed their rules recently, and so that was a lot of the time delay that Bethel had. And then Mr. Schumacher can answer your project-specific questions. And then you also have that large packet they submitted, which has their LLC information, the company information, their financial audits. And my staff, Priscilla Aradondo, also contacted all of the project towns that are listed in their packet, and nobody had anything adverse to say about the project. And as our town, we've had no problems with the Silver Cliff Apartments. So now Mr. Schumacher can give you more detailed information about that company. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Mr. Schumacher?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mark Schumacher, Bethel Development. I want to thank Jamie and the city attorney for the time and effort that they've put into working with us. We've been in, well, not continual conversations with them, but conversations as needed to work through the nuances of the program that we're trying to work through with MFA. Let me start off by saying, first of all, without the help of the city, without the donations and hopefully some fee waivers, the project would be economically unfeasible and also structurally unfeasible. As Ms. Embick said, the location of the site and the fact that it is a brownfield brings additional points to this development. And I hate to flip about it, but points are points, and this is so competitive. There are other cities and towns in New Mexico right now trying to figure out how to put their deal together. And like I said the last time I was here, we don't know what the future brings. We don't know if this opportunity will be here again, but it's here now. We think we have, with your help, an outstanding application. It scores as high as anything could just about. There's no guarantees, we don't know, we can't predict the future, but we think it's a very, very strong package, and that MFA will look upon it very favorably. Couple of other points that have been brought up to us since the last time I was here, and I just wanted to stress, we're committed to a healthy, sustainable, safe and secure environment for our residents. We're committed to extensive landscaping onsite. We want to make this a beautiful project. We're committed to a walking trail around the site onsite. We're committed to providing accessibility to Juniper Street, which is going to require work on the staff and work through some right-of-way issues. There's some grade differentials there. There's a gas meter there, we've got some other things. We need to work through that. I mean, we don't have a final plan. We have a, it's a little bit more than a gleam in my eye, but it's still pretty preliminary. We have a lot of work to do. In terms of the other questions that were raised, I think Jamie answered them in terms of accessibility to transportation. I also spoke to the transit service, and they're more than agreeable to discussing with us an additional stop at onsite, which would be awesome. If you look at the route, the silver route that it takes, it goes to the hospital, it goes to Walarts, it goes by Albertson's, it goes, oddly enough, it doesn't go to the senior center. I don't know why, but it doesn't. It gets down there close, but it doesn't get to the senior center. I visited there today. But it, you know, we're a half a mile, just a half a mile to the, that'd be the north end of Ballard Street, which is, you know, where it is. And we encourage walkability. Someone said that there's four components to a good walk: safety, comfort, being interesting, and, shoot, what's the other one? I've got it written down. Anyway, it was, I'm not going to say, oh, shoot, oh, oops. We think that this site presents itself and lends itself to an outstanding development for the seniors who are here in Silver City. I don't know what else I can say. I don't want to rehash everything that I talked about last time, because I'll start getting boring again. But I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Good evening, Courtney. Counselor Kano?
I have a question, actually, my, I guess it's a two-part question, and it's also been involved Chief Reynolds. First of all, I'd like to know if he's been involved in these talks, just because he's the one in charge of traffic control, and also I'd like to know his opinion based on how his officers are going to have to be dealing with traffic if we have something up there on that hill.
Mayor, city council? No, I haven't been involved in any of that as of yet. When the project starts getting rolling, we'll take a look closer than I do.
Okay. Okay, then, yes, if this is going to continue, I would appreciate it if Chief Reynolds is involved.
The, it just brought my attention that approximately 25% of the people who live at Silver Cliff's Apartments are seniors.
My specific concern is the fact that there is one very large hill that you have to go up to to get to that property, and I'm concerned because there's no, because that's, if I'm not mistaken, that street's actually a highway, so that we're going to have some issues with traffic. So I really want to stress that Chief Reynolds needs to be involved so that--
Okay, okay. If I may, our main access is going to be off Juniper, not Pope. Pope is the one that is a very steep, very steep hill. Juniper comes out--
Okay, but you're still going to be adding to traffic, so I'm still going to--
There's no question, there's no question, we will. However, of all the uses that could be put on this site, traffic generated from the senior housing development is going to be as minimal as could be.
Counselor Kano, aside from Chief Reynolds being involved, the DOT would have to permit any access to both Highway 180 and, well, both sides of Highway 180. So once we start getting specifics as to the development and access, the DOT has some very restrictive requirements as far as access to the highway. So they're going to have to jump the leash hoops to comply with both of them and our police department.
Okay, we understand that.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Madison?
I have a comment. I just want to make sure that folks know that this is the beginning of a relatively long process. It's outlined in the letter that we were given, that at this point, there's no certainty that you will be awarded this, even with the points to the MFA process, because it's very competitive, this particular let. So it's only one community will get something, is that correct?
No, it's been our experience, it's somewhere between four, and depending upon the size of the applications, the amount of dollars requested, anywhere from four to six units, four to six projects statewide will receive funding. So it's, and there'll be three or four times that many applications. Specifically, to talk about the timeline, our application goes in February 15th, no later than, February 15th. MFA typically, excuse me, makes a preliminary announcement in May. They finalize their list of awardees, if you will, around the end of June. And then it would take us the better part of a year to actually get all the financing in place, the permitting in place, working through ADOT, or New Mexico Department of Transportation, I'm sorry, and getting ready to start construction. I wouldn't see this starting before the end of the first quarter of next year. Next year.
So all that, and that schedule is built in, also all the work to, working with the town and security, you know, as you said, with the New Mexico Department of Transportation, working with our chief, working with all various departments to make sure everything is following along the schedule. I mean, it's one of those things where, at this point, as you said, it's sort of a little bit more than like a glimmer in your eye right now, but it's not set in stone exactly what's going to, what it's going to look like, the site, when it's built. Except for the number of units.
Thank you.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to--
The number of units, the square footage of the units--
Right.
--the approximate square footage of the building itself. The site is not going to change. The access points will be, as we said, worked through with the Department of Transportation and the town. The site plan approvals will be done through the town. All the permitting that is done locally will be done locally, some is done in Santa Fe.
So I just want to mention briefly that Counselor Kano has corrected, actually, Juniper, which turns into Highway 90, or Hudson Street, when it's in town, is the steep hill. That is the big hill going up--
Yes.
--that's currently paved.
Yes, yes, yes.
And if I remember correctly from your original drawing, I think it's in here as well, isn't there an access or egress coming out on the other side away from Juniper? Is that Pope Street? Okay, just, yeah, it's, that's behind--
That makes it easier.
Right, that's what I thought. Okay, so that itself is also, as well as steep, but the current one that we're talking about that is with where the light and signal is, is very steep as well. And I could tell you as someone who lives up in that area, I avoid that intersection when it's icy. So, just saying, it's one of those things. So I think that she's, you know, I think that at this point, it seems to me that we're just trying to get to the process where you can put this in. And I think that one of the things that this ordinance, I should mention, and I think it's really important to call-- Okay, is it in this one, or is it in-- I know, I can't remember if it's in this one, maybe I have to have some help from Mr. Scavron. Is it in this one, or is it one of the two things coming up where it's in the resolution coming up that we'll talk about? Where if this project doesn't proceed, there won't be, there's no transaction, there's no donation of property.
Absolutely not.
And it's, if you decide not to do it, you know, whatever. So I think it's really important for folks to understand that the only way the town can do this is through the ordinance that we have for affordable housing. And this is permitted by the state to do this. So it's not that we're, the A, they can come and ask for us to give them property, it has to be through a structure like this for affordable housing. Correct, Mr. Scavron?
The obligation, the obligation to commit to the donation is dependent on them getting the tax credits, because without the tax credits, they cannot do this project, nor would any private company without that kind of assistance could not do this project. Affordable housing projects like this, keeping the rents low are not feasible investments without tax credits. So if, we will not be going to closing and transferring title. We are committing, if you get the credits and move forward, we will, we have committed. Now, in our local ordinance, it says that all we have to do is have a proposed ordinance, a proposed commitment. But the checklist in Santa Fe, in MFA, changes that. They say, no, you have to have a deal done, you have to have a solid commitment to commit, a solid commitment to donate the land, and any other donations have to be outlined with the application. Now, if it's not successful, all those commitments are null and void. That's said in the resolution, and that resolution will be the document that goes up north. The ordinance we're doing to comply with our local law, the resolution we're doing to comply with the NMFA, NMFA checklist.
Thank you. Any other questions? Except for if we're ready to make, for me to make--
I want to give the other council members a chance to ask questions.
No, not tonight.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, and do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1254, an ordinance authorized in the donation of the tract of town-owned land known as the Old Hillcrest Hospital Site for an affordable housing project with the following additions. Under the third whereas, the last sentence, that starts with inspections and other fees normally imposed on a construction project within the town, to state the following: Including the policy mandated recapture of investment costs incurred by the town--
to state the following, including the policy mandated recapture of investment costs incurred by the town relating to the subject property. Under the fifth whereas, after, in the first sentence after, where it says whereas, the council finds that such a donation consideration of a waiver and fees to add and charges. Under number two, under there, fourth, where it states, the town manager is authorized to waive such fees to add and charges. And additionally, on number two, in the third sentence, which begins with the town, period, such discretion includes the authority to deny such waivers of fees, and to add the words and charges. So this is to ensure that we have a comprehensive, or we're comprehensively identifying the normal charges and fees, since there are charges in addition to fees that are normally assessed. So we're just making sure that that's all included in the ordinance.
Okay, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, I will second that motion as stated and added to.
Thank you. We have a motion as read, and a second. Is there any further discussion? Are there any comments from the public that might be here tonight, or questions from the public? Okay, Ann, roll call, please.
Councilor Edison?
Aye.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anyone want to take a break, or have a motion?
Mr. Ray, I move to, for a short recess.
Anything on the motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll take five minutes and recess. I'll call on me, back to order. Next item is new business. First item under new business is 11A. Approval slash disapproval of resolution number 2017-01, open meetings. Ann?
This is our annual open meetings resolution. And it includes information about our notice requirements, how we provide agendas within 72 hours to the public on our open meetings. There's information about the dates of your council meetings for this year, 2017. And it, nothing changed from last year, other than the dates of the council meetings, so I'm asking for your approval.
Any questions for Ann? Do I hear a motion? Council Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I want to approve of resolution number 2017-01, open meetings.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ray?
I'll second that motion as read.
Okay, we have a motion as read, and a second. Is there any further discussion? Ann, roll call, please.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Councilor Edison?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is 11B. The approval slash disapproval of resolution number 2017-02, to confirm a policy of the town of Silver City, providing for recovery of investment cost incurred by the town of, with regard to town-owned properties to be sold or otherwise transferred to third parties. Mr. Brown, or?
Councilor Edison, sir.
Councilor Edison?
No, I was gonna, actually, thank you, Mayor. I was going to move it to Mr. Brown to discuss it, so.
Well, basically, what this is, a resolution reaffirming the policies that I've basically been following for the last many years, is that when the town purchases or makes an investment in a property, that we recover the cost of that investment. For example, the Silco is one. Basically, it's when we've made an investment and then turn over the property to someone else, whether it be through a lease or a sale. We did it in the case of the Silco, and as well as the Chinese Palace property. So, we are gonna look at that same policy to apply it to this project as well. So, we're looking at the purchase, the original purchase cost plus the cleanup cost and the demolition cost for the property.
Okay, any questions from Mr. Brown?
No, sir.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 2017-02, to confirm a policy of the town of Silver City, providing for the recovery of investment costs incurred by the town with regard to town-owned properties to be sold or otherwise transferred to third parties.
Thank you, Councilor Edison. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Amos Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion as stated.
Okay, we have a motion as read, and a second. Is there any discussion from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment about this.
Yes.
I think it's really critical that when we're using the public's money to purchase or to purchase a property that becomes town-owned property, to do cleanup, to do demolition, to do whatever it is that we're doing with that property, that we do our best to recapture the investment that the public's put in to being able to purchase that property. So I'm very pleased to be able to sponsor this resolution, because I think that this lets our citizens know that recapturing that investment is important to us. And it's important for them to know that we, we do think that it's critical to do that, because it is their money that we're using to do these things, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion? Are there any comments or questions from the general public here tonight? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ann, roll call, please.
Councilor Edison?
Aye.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is 11C. The approval slash disapproval of resolution number 2017-03, to donate two parcels of real property known as the Old Hillcrest Hospital Site to Bethel Development Incorporated for the sole purpose of designing, construction, and maintaining an affordable housing project under the provisions of Chapter 8, Section 9-1.
Chapter 9.
Chapter 9.
Right, of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Will this be Mr. Scavron, okay?
Yes.
Mayor, council, the reason we're doing this resolution is a redundancy. It makes reference to the ordinance that was just passed. Our local ordinance requires that we do this by ordinance, the donation of this property. But according to NMFA, the director who I spoke to not long ago, their checklist says a resolution. I stated, well, an ordinance is a strong or stronger than a resolution. Would you accept the ordinance? And the comment was, well, I would argue that, indicating that maybe that's not the final authority. So rather than cause hubbub or dispute between the state and the town, we'll do the resolution for their checklist, and we do the ordinance for our local law. So that's why we have this resolution. This will be accompanying the application of Bethel Development to Santa Fe.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Scavron? Okay, do I hear a motion? Councilor Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2017-03, to donate two parcels of real property known as the Old Hillcrest Hospital Site to Bethel Development Incorporated for the sole purpose of designing, constructing, and maintaining an affordable housing project under the provisions of Chapter 9, Sections 9-1, at Sec. of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councilor Amos Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
Okay, we have a motion and discussion, and a second. Any discussion? Are there any questions or comments from the general public here tonight? There being none, we would like to ask Ann Mackie if she would do a roll call, please.
Councilor Edison?
Aye.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next agenda item is 11D. The approval slash disapproval of bid number 16 slash 17-3, Ridge Road East Sewer Line Extension. Mr. Brown?
I thought that I might do a brief history of what's led up to this award. Approximately six years ago, the Town of Silver City submitted an application to the Office of the Natural Resource Trustee, which is a subdivision of the Environment Department. There was a program that was created under that office. It was created with funds that were paid by Phelps Dodge to the state as part of a fine for a spill that they had. I believe it was approximately $15 million. But as part of the agreement with Phelps Dodge is all of the funds had to be used as grant funds back to the local entities in Grant County for groundwater protection projects. Originally, the Town of Silver City, we submitted an application, this application was our original application, to extend the sewer mains and everything out to the streets off of Ridge Road. They are all outside city limits. But the original reason that we applied for that was because we were having some issues with the groundwater monitoring at the old landfill. And there was some speculation that because of those septic tanks, there might have been leaking from those septic tanks that might have attributed to part of that groundwater contamination. We found out that it wasn't. There were some other issues that were resolved at the landfill, and there was no real issues at the landfill at all. So, they had us choose between this project and another project off of Black Hawk, which is inside the city limits, and we chose the one that was inside the city limits. We did that project. This grant is 100% grant funding, so it pays for the engineering, design, and construction. And so we completed that project, then we were, we thought we were done, but the Office of Natural Resource Trustee came back to us and asked us if we would do this project, because they had the extra funds available, because some of the other projects fell through. So, I went to Grant County, because this project is outside Grant County. The town has an ordinance under our sewer connection ordinance that requires if you have a sewer main within 300 feet of your property, you're required to connect to the sewer main. The Grant County approved an ordinance doing the same thing within the ETZ. And so now, the ETZ is covered by their ordinance, which is similar to ours, which would require all these individuals to connect. As part of this grant, we are waiving the sewer connection fee the town has. The Office of Natural Resource Trustee, as part of this grant, is going to pay to close all of their septic tanks. There's 160, approximately 160 residences that are affected by this project. The grant will pay for all of them to close out all of their septic tanks. But it will only pay for those who pay with them who have incomes within 150% of the median household income within Grant County. It will pay for them to connect their home to this, to this line. As of today, we've received 79 applications. Of those 79 applications, 77 have been approved for 100% subsidy for both the closeout and connection. And so, once we start constructing this project, then we'll start working with the county. And we're still gonna be going up to the other residences and try to get them to comply, but if not, then we'll work with the county for that. But, along with that, we received six bids for this project. The low bid was to Ridge Merrill Enterprises out of Las Cruces, and a staff's recommendation to award bids lots one through six for the amount of $1,696,125 plus gross receipts taxes, which will be the gross receipts tax rate in the county.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Councilor Edison?
Is it Ridge or is it Merrill Enterprises? It says Merrill Enterprises.
Oh, I started saying Ridge Road Project, but I said Merrill.
Okay, that's just clarification.
Yeah, I said. More, M-O-R-R-O-W.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Councilor Ray, Mr. Brown.
Can you tell us exactly what streets are included, or?
I have a problem remembering the wrong street. I can't tell you. They're all, they're the first five streets coming off of Highway 90, going, what is it, south? So I believe the last two streets, the last street right before the golf course street, and the golf course street are the only two in that subdivision that have not been, that are not part of this project. And with that, the original set aside money for this project, the engineers estimate the money set aside by the granting entity was $2.44 million. So this project is under, like, $800,000 less than what the original estimate. So we may be able to come back and get those two remaining streets as part of this project later on, so.
Thank you.
Do we have to apply for permission to use other money to continue the project, or?
Yes, we will have to complete this one to make sure that there's no extra funds required to complete this original phase. And then they'll come back and we'll see what we can, what we can do.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Ray?
I, I move to approve a bid number 16 dash 17, slash 17, dash 3, Ridge Road East Sewer Line Extension to Merrill Enterprises, Inc., for bid on lots one, two, three, four, five, and six, in the amount of $1,696,125 plus the CRTs. Numerical CRTs.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilor Connaught?
I'll second that motion as stated.
A motion and a second. Any discussion from the council?
I have a comment.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to comment that that area that we're talking about is the watershed into San Jacinto Creek. And so there are a number of what used to be mobile home sites out there, where the home has been removed or perhaps destroyed, where there are septic systems. So I know that there are lots of things that are gonna need to be done up there. Some of those septic systems, you can tell, are leaking. So, this is really important for the health and safety of the community up there and the watershed.
The grant will pay for septic to be closed whether there is a trailer there or a building or not. It's specific to the lot, not to a building on it.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, any other discussion, rather? Any comments or questions from the general public? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is 11E. The approval slash disapproval of resolution number 2017-04, adopt and records, retention, and disposition schedules for the Town of Silver City. retention, and disposition schedules for the town of Silver City. Ann?
Yes, I'm requesting your approval to continue using the same records retention and disposition schedules for town records that we've been using since 1997. I'm asking because in November 2015, the State Records Center and Archives repealed those schedules when they adopted new ones. The new schedules do not have the detailed record descriptions that we're accustomed to, and many of the retention periods have been increased substantially, which would create a hardship for the town with regard to storing more records permanently. State Records Center and Archives advised municipalities during their roundtable discussions about the new schedules that the state had no jurisdiction over municipal records, and they cited Attorney General Opinion Number 61-36, which states, "Records made or kept by the municipality under its own authority and for its own purposes may be disposed of as the municipality sees fit. Therefore, the town council can approve the disposition of its records, and we do not have to obtain state approval." Also, the General Counsel of the New Mexico Municipal League offered the same advice to municipal clerks and stated that we could either continue using the repealed schedules, adopt the new state schedules, or create our own. It's staff's recommendation that we continue to use the same schedules as a guide to records retention because their descriptions and retention periods are more suitable for the town's records management.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Ann? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2017-04, adopting records, retention, and disposition schedules for the town of Silver City.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion is stated.
Counselor Edison? We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from the public here tonight? Ann, roll call, please.
Counselor Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item, 11F, F, is the approval slash disapproval of the destruction of records from the Executive Finance Municipal Court Police Recreation Center Public Library and Utilities Departments, quantity 112 boxes. Ann?
Yes, as you read, we have records ready for destruction upon your approval. They've met their retention period per the record schedules that we're accustomed to using and what you've just approved. Thank you. So they're ready to go if, if you approve their destruction. May I have your approval?
Any questions for Ann? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the destruction of records from the Executive Finance Municipal Court Police Recreation Center Public Library and Utilities Departments, quantity of 112 boxes.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Edison?
A second motion is stated.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. I'd just like to make one closing comment. There's been a lot of underground work going on on College Avenue, and I really appreciate, personally, because I drive up that, down that street every day, the way that they've fixed their schedule so that it doesn't, it has a very low impact on traffic that goes up and down that street. And so I think they're to be commended for that.
I'll pass that out, please.
And also tonight, we've heard a lot of reports of people who volunteer in our community, and that's really important, and that's what makes a city like Silver City such a dynamic and beautiful and successful community that it is. And we owe all of the volunteers in Silver City who spent literally thousands of hours helping to make Silver City a better place to live. And last but not least, I know there was a lot of work in getting that application prepared for the, for the senior housing project, all the way from Mr. Scavron, who figured out the legal way to get that done, to council members, to city staff, who spent a lot of time making that work. We still have a long way to go, but at least we got to that important point. So thank everybody for that. Does any of the council want to make any concluding remarks? Okay. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Amos Smith?
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.